Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. And, Harold.
Thank you.
So, we have a call. All right. Picture. I talked. All right. Was able to touch base with each one of you. But I knew those three weren't going to be able to make it. So, thank you for. I mean, you know, I'm sorry that we had to call this meeting, but right after we already sent the tax certifications out to municipalities. So, we had to email that and let them know that this is likely to change. DPI contacted me and said, hey, did you know you're over levy by 96,576 hours? Or, how would I know that? No, but I started looking at the revenue limit worksheet like, that's the computer, that's the exempted computer. I said, it wasn't on my worksheet that you put out on October 15th. And then they started looking into things. Oh, okay. Well, you're one of the 10 Wisconsin Union High School districts. They left the Union High School districts off of their file that they sent to DPI with exempted computer. So, they showed a blank. I should have known better and I should have asked questions earlier, but they've been playing with that number the last two years. And so, I thought, well, maybe something changed that I didn't know. We had it in our budget plan. Anyway, if you look at the document again, you'll see the yellow, the only changes in what we approved from last week Wednesday. Instead of a decrease in that state aid for exempt computers, it was what we had anticipated. So, that line just comes up completely, which changes the bottom line on what we're levying. So, we wouldn't levy the additional 96,000 for that loss of aid. Instead, we'll keep the aid and we'll reduce our levy. So, it was pretty important to get you together to be able to. Otherwise, we're unfairly taxing our taxpayers when we don't need to. So, I mean, that would have been, the mitigation would have been, we would have lost 96,000 in state aid. It just left our levy the way it was. We couldn't recover it going forward, you know, at any point. So, it's important that we made the adjustment. Fortunately, we had some days in between. November 1st is the deadline for, by law. They said they've had districts that had to go further and a little past that, which is not a big deal. November 10th is the real important date that the municipalities, municipalities have the information to send out tax bills. So, we're fine on time, thankfully, today, work for at least 50 people or more. So, on the next page, you can see the 211 property tax went down because of the increase in. So, you can see what the number was on October 17th. Just comes down, $96,000. Same thing, the pure rate down there in the middle of the page, that went up 90,000. Nothing changed on the expenditure side. And then the tax levy. The levy goes down, 96,000. Changes the total levy by that same amount and then it increases our tax rate by 2 cents. While we approved, actually, last week Wednesday. So. So, it's.
Well, on behalf of the taxpayers, thank you.
I would have not felt good if we had it. We need better savings. Any questions?
Every year, it seems like we're ticking down on that tax rate. I think it's lower and lower and lower. When's that gonna happen?
Well, next year, it's gonna go up.
Yeah.
So, here's what happened this year. We go back to that revenue page. Second page of the document here. Go up to the middle of the page. The second line of the 600s, the 62 general state aid. At annual meeting, we're predicting almost 5 million, just 4.8 million in aid. It came in at 6.6 million. So, what changed was our spending. We didn't get. We levied the 1.7 million in revenue limit dollars. And normally, we would make a debt payment last year. So, state aid is all based on last year's numbers. And we didn't make our debt payments, so that was paid off, right? So, we had the 1.7 million in levy, but we didn't get it spent on the project yet. We started our project in May and we ordered equipment in May, June. But most of the work happened, you know, we can't start to June 15th, you're 15 days in June to get work done. Most of it's happening in this year, actually, this fiscal year. So, that expense didn't go into the formula. And, you know, you do know or you don't know, we're negatively aided at the third level of the state aid formulas. We have a tertiary gain, negative tertiary gain. And when we spend into that third level, it costs us over a dollar for each spend, about 50, we'll call it. For every dollar spent above into that third tier of the formula. Well, this year, because we didn't have any of this project work, probably started. We just barely went into that third level of the formula. And so, and that's called negative aid. And what it does is it reduces the second tier of the formula. So, we didn't have our second tier formula reduced like we normally would have because our spending happened. Now, it's all gonna happen this year. And so, we went up 37% state aid. Based on that. We can only lose in any one year 15%. So, we're gonna. I'm gonna suggest that we use that aid formula as much to our advantage as we can go forward. Next year already, I know, because we have the majority of the spend on this project, this HVAC project. And I'm recommending that we move as much money over to Fund 46 for future projects as we can this year. Because we're gonna take the maximum hit on aid anyway. We're gonna hit the 15%. So, now we're spending, not that you wanna waste money, but if you can charge the expense this year to Fund 10 toward the aid formula, get it over into Fund 46 for capital projects this year, it doesn't hurt you the 414 points it's over there. And it can be used for projects.
So, let me make sure I understand where the different pockets are. Is the, so, the Fund 46. Pocket.
Yeah.
Is that the one was created 45 years ago?
Yeah.
So, so we can do exactly what we're doing, which is when we max out 15%, to the extent we've got resources to do it, we can take those off the table, stick them in this pocket, and if we spend it future years where we, in the past, would have been hit by negative tertiary, we're not being hit at all, correct? And so, it'll take us a while to age back out of that 37% improvement.
Right.
Particularly since. That 37% getting back is 50% back. This will take us over three years to come back.
It's the best thing for our taxpayers. I mean, it's. The hard thing about it is we're gonna see ups and downs in our tax rates doing this and maximizing our aid. And the reason is, we don't have any debt. Because if we had some debt, I wouldn't, we wouldn't have to do this. I could keep that level because debt is the one thing the state still allows us to control. And so, instead of having this massive drop this year, we over levy our debt, prepay our debt, and have it grow a nice amount. And then next year, another nice amount. And we just continue to drop it because we'll be continuing to pay our debt. Forget about that, we don't have that. So, that's how I would typically done it, and that's how I've done it in other districts. But, you know, to take a 37% increase and only drop 15 is probably our best case. It just takes some explaining, you know, when that tax rate's gonna go up next year. We have to be prepared for that. To be able to explain it now and then. You can start the conversation with the community members, but then send them to me so they can, you know, if they have questions that you can't answer. Don't feel like you have to understand this thing inside now, you know.
You did a great job explaining that to. Hey, most people aren't even after the explanation. I mean, what do you mean, you're, you got debt, you're better shaped than you would be otherwise, like, it's just a thing itself. Right, to some extent, it's just a way to stay close.
I don't like that either, but it's the only tool that allows you to really control your levy a little easier. Now, we really, it's controlled by the revenue limit and the amount stated again. And those are both state calculations that are provided to us. They both go back to an equal degree. You know, the formulas and how they are. The equalization aid formula is, I believe it's okay. I think it's the right formula. The revenue limit formula, that's not okay. That's the one that needs to change.
Do you think that that's foreseeable?
Well, in my time, I've been doing this for almost 20 years now. It hasn't, it's, there's been three attempts to make a change. The last one's the Blue Ribbon Commission. Remember hearing everything about that? And they came up with a few different ideas that have been incorporated into some school funding formula, but still no will to change that base revenue amount. Other than the people that are way down there, like, there was people that were getting less than 10,000 per student. So, there was a provision put in. If you're not at 10,300 per student, we're gonna give you a hundred dollar increase every year until you hit the 10,300. But we're just above that. So, it doesn't help us, but it does help some of those smaller districts that were way back lower spending in 93. So.
So, are there restrictions or penalties for pulling funds from Fund 46?
For pulling that from 46?
Yeah. I mean, once you put them over there.
They're there.
And you're gonna use them.
Yeah.
Are there any penalties or restrictions on use?
None of you, well, there are restrictions that would be, it has to be capital. So, like this project that we did on the HVAC. You know, would be a, really, as long as you don't spend it on salaries and structure. We did it towards capital.
Okay, thank you.
So, we know we have a lot of capital improvements ahead of us and more than the 8.5 million in referendum dollars. So, anything we can get put over there and still leave enough in our general fund to have us not have to cash flow borrow. Avoid a cash flow borrowing. So, we're at the third year where we haven't had to borrow plenty of our fund balances. We're just making it, you know, do that December payroll before our January tax receipts. So, as long, I wanna keep that at that level so we don't have to borrow money. Or even, you know, we could type, get that real tight, too, and just do a line of credit, which, there's some fees involved in that. It's probably under 5,000 for a line of credit. And then, you know, if you, well, we did anything, we could use the money for two, three weeks. Pay that off right away from our tax receipts. Your interest cost is probably a hundred thousand, even less than this one. So. I would wanna keep it so we didn't have to cash flow borrow, you know, and then, but whatever we can. So, maybe we'll talk about that later this year, we'll see how the budget's doing and if we're having any savings with them. We'll bunch of money in the Fund 46, still leaving up the Fund 10. But that might free up our general fund budget to take care of the instructional things because we didn't get any increase in revenue. This budget, we won't get an increase for next budget. The answer from legislators are, or the answers they give us is use your S R money. But we know what we got at first round, we got 40,000. Second round, we know we gotta have none. 700,000 of that last year already. And 400,000 we'll use this year. And it's really intended for instructional, you know, catching up kids that are, that fell behind. So, we'll use it on those type of strategies, even if they're already, I mean, we'll have to use to balance our budget. Normally, you match up, I said this last meeting, but normally, you match the revenue and expenditure on a grant. So, if you have this 400,000 revenue coming in, you have a matching expenditure to go with it. I put the revenue in this budget, but I haven't increased the expenditures with that revenue. Because we didn't get any left on, we needed that revenue just to balance this budget. So, what we'll do is we'll pay for the instructional strategies that we already do. And we've got a few ads, you know, some more chubing that we already put in, you know, more nursing services. It's all about the program. We'll pay for all of those things, but the extra we'll put toward instructional strategies that we're already doing to balance the budget. Then, we might have to do that next year, too, but. You know, if there's any left over, we'll still pay for those things. And we'll, if we free up budget space, we'll pay for capital improvements and we'll get it over into Fund 46. Paying those improvements. And then, one for the formula. And we won't have to pay prevailing wage. If we buy projects, we buy capital projects with that S R money, we have to pay unprevailing wage for all the contractors. And they'll, I've already heard districts that hit, like, the budget went number in the bids came in at like 80% higher than what they planned because they know it's better one. So, I would watch better one of those projects, like, we'll check out just. So. I have a long story around whatever question was just asked.
So, how significant will the tax change be next year, Jeff? And will they, will they fluctuate every year then? Or is that, what's the story with regards to them?
Don't know for sure, but I think. Cause I don't, I'll have that in a month or two, but I do our projection. And I'll factor in a 15% loss to aid, but if we get.
I'm sure you're talking about the tax bill that you issued in December when it's coming out.
So, if we just took 15% off the aid we're getting, that's gonna go onto the tax levy, so that's 991,000. I could buy that by our equalized property value. So, that would be the increase in the levy. Because of trading big numbers.
Creating large values.
Maybe small screen. First, I'll probably go a fuck of a 5% or whatever. And the middle rate, it'll do about 1 and 1/2 cents, so maybe 2 cents. The levy will be noticeable. Cause that's almost a million dollars increased to the levy. The levy rate won't be as noticeable, it's gonna be a couple cents. So. No, and the rate it won't be a lot. It's the levy that's gonna, like, whoa, your levy went up a million dollars this year. Yeah, because we lost a million dollars in state aid. So, it's easy to explain that way. Well, why'd you lose the aid? Well, because our spend was here, you know. And remember, two years ago, we had a huge increase in aid. In fact. I handed this out last meeting, but there's a chart here that shows our aid over time. And where it is right now, it's the highest it's been since 10/11. So, that is, it was a very significant benefit we got to aid for this year. Something we never see. But we haven't had that situation where, where you just, where you, because we always had the debt maybe you had to pay. Now, we had expenses that we couldn't get the work done fast enough to make, which is okay. It just really dropped our spend to a level that just doesn't, wouldn't make sense going forward. Going forward, we'll have a more consistent level of spending, but maybe not Fund 10, have a Fund 46. Which won't hurt the aid part. So, it's, it's kinda cool. How does it gonna work out?
It's your major.
I just, I love how you can. We get like two tools that we can still use. And we're using them.
It's great. So, just two questions to help me. Make sure I'm clear of my findings. Looks like the 96,000 dollars is the issue. Of course, for. It is entirely a wash when it comes to funds available to pay our budget.
Yes.
Yeah. Then, explain the depths.
Yeah. Great question. That's something we went over on Wednesday. We, last year, we had a surplus of 1.7 million. So, we had a bunch of project money in there, last year's budget that just couldn't get done last year. Kind of what I was talking about earlier. You know, 15 days when school ends to June 30th, where the year ends. So, that half million dollars is carryover project money that we need to finish up those projects this year. So, it's a balanced budget, but it's. We'll have that. We had that last year, we had 600,000 planned. We beat that budget even 1.7. To be good. I imagine we'll beat this, cause there's other areas, the projects we still do, there's other areas that will, we should be able to beat our budget. I'm getting that tighter, though, than we have been in the past. Just so it's more, trying to be a little more realistic. I like to stay with a little less than 1% on overall budget, you know. But I always stand up and serve inside of that. But that's what. Yeah, we're about 32, 33% of expenditures.
Fund dollars.
Fund balance? Yeah. Dollars. Uh, yeah, right around 10 million. And that's an important number. Fund balance is measured on June 30th. So, when we say 33%, that's, that's on June 30th. If you ask me, what's the fund balance on December 30th? I'd probably say it's about 1% or 0%. So, it's, and then on January 15th, when we get those first tax receipts, it'll go back up to, oh, we get about 4 million on that first payment. So, yeah, about 5% of that we get our tax payment in February, and then a little one in April. And a final one in August that we get to count in the previous year. And that's how we end up with a 30% on June 30th. So, it's not. It's not a savings account, but it's, I suppose it's as close to a savings account as one. That savings account goes down to drag zero because of how our funding works.
I think, cause I think people don't realize, that's not, it's not case you have 10 million dollars sitting there in your balance. I mean, it really, it goes down that very slowly, it works back up until you hit that, and it is 33, and boom, there it is.
That's what I'm trying to say. It's not 10 million dollars available to spend. It's, it's to get us through our cash flow need. And we can choose to spend all that by projects with the 10 million dollars and then just borrow enough to make our payrolls until those tax receipts. But that's on the wrong side, that's the flip of what I think we would want to do. It's like, we're paying interest on money, although interest is so cheap right now. So, you could argue that we'll borrow the money right now. Then you, how do you get back out of that hole, you know, once you go there? I think this is a better goal.
I think people need to realize that we don't have 10 million dollars just sitting there.
Sorry.
Just sitting there, you know, like the dust.
Correct.
You're not collecting any interest.
It doesn't collect us, it gets used to. You know, this down to a very small. But last year, we didn't take out a line of credit, this year we won't. The first year that I was here, we took. I knew we didn't need the short term borrow. We used to be short term borrow, what, almost a couple million forever, right? Each year to get us through. And I could see that we could get by with a line of credit just as a safety. We didn't, we were so close, we were within 100,000 dollars of cash. But, oh wow, that's very close, but we didn't have to have any.
Nice job.
It just, it's nice, that's why you need that safety there, just in case. You know, you never know about your cash flows and practices. Those makes that the time it's never 100% sure. So, you just make your best prediction. That worked out.
I guess we'll see, we just always assume that's the way it runs.
Thank you so.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Well, we didn't question it, we just, okay, we're just gonna need to borrow some money to get through the year, period.
Yeah. I don't think Ben understood it well, but.
Maybe that's it.
I really don't. And it was, that wasn't a bad thing, because there was years where you could make money on that borrow. You can't make a lot, it's our charge lots, but you can make a little bit, some years. So, then, in some of those years, it's kind of a sense to borrow at a lower rate than you're making. So.
So, Jeff, are these wide ranges and like the fluctuations, is this typical for a school budget?
The fluctuation in tax rate?
Yeah, well, and I guess in everything up here, there's fluctuation all over the place. I mean, is that, is that kinda typical?
On the cash flow side?
Yeah.
It's typical, especially for districts like us, especially our surrounding area. Many of them cash flow borrow just to get through. And it's because we're so, we don't get a lot of aid around here. Where our property values per student are high. It makes us look richer in the corner, we get less aid. So, the aid payments get paid earlier than the tax payments. Aid payments come in September. December, we get a large one. I think there might be one in between. But our aid is so small, like, well, it's bigger this year. So, it will make a big difference this year. We'll have a little more revenue than we would anticipate in a normal year. Yes. If you're heavily rely on tax money, which is the way our district operates, because it's the way we sit in the formula, then your funds aren't coming till January 15th. So, you gotta have enough to get you there. You know, from June 30th or July 1st to January 15th. Now, you have to have enough cash to get you there. So, around here, it's a lot that way. I was in Marshall School District, which is over near Madison, it's very rural, 1,200 kids, out in the farm country. And we were probably 80% aided. So, 80% of our revenue came from state aid, 20% from the taxpayer. So, the cash came in a little earlier than the little bit that I was relying on, you know, January. It was mostly, most of it was coming with those aid payments. And that's why a lot of those districts are advocating for pay my aid 10, every month for 10 months of the year instead of quarterly payments, which is the way it's done now, which I would want to. I would want that cash earlier than later, so I can avoid the cash flow. But we're on the flip of the equation, because we just did less aid. That's the equalized aid formula, right? People that live out in that area, maybe don't have the funds to be able to live in this area. Or they don't want to live in this area, either way. But every kid across the state should have an equalized education. That's the equalized aid formula. So, we don't have to.
Well, the schools up there, the northern part of state, we have sparse populations, a huge area where you're paying tons of life perpetuation. Yeah. They're, they're, it's even worse without.
School finance in Wisconsin. I can tell.
You weird on you.
It's interesting, especially, I've been in a highly aided districts, and I've been in three now, not highly aided districts. So, I know both ends of that part and how.
It's like 4 plus.
Yeah. Fun?
Are we the most highly unaided out of the three that you were?
Probably, yeah, by a little bit. I mean, when I mean false category, they're all similar codes. Property value per student, so as your student count goes down, if your property value stays the same, what happens to your value per student? Still up there, right? So, you look richer in the formula as your student count goes down. Even if your value stays the same, but our values continue to rise in addition to students going down, which makes us look richer and richer.
And the last couple of years, that just was the top place to look out, but all built up. How many dollars going up?
Do we know what the numbers for property appreciation?
This year, it was just over 5%.
Now, is that compared to, is that statewide or is that just?
It's ours.
Also, compared to statewide.
But it would, I would say, I was. A really good guess is that we would have exceeded what the state averages around here this year. Not always, but this year. I don't know what that happens.
Oh, yeah, I'm responsible, we go around. Yeah, but that's quick stuff.
We have a lot of really great. Quick trip, sorry, there, I mean, I've had one before.
But there's a whole lot.
Oh, my God, I've been down the last two weeks and it's just exploded.
Yeah. That's our tiny little segment of that town of Lisbon, right on New York City, once it's up worked.
We're open to the tiny segments.
On the other side. I mean, Lisbon's bigger, but we just have a tiny little space that's part there.
The two moved out of the area, you won't see that.
All of a sudden, they're rolling the pool, thanks, Charles.
Well, this, this is huge commercials.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, exactly, and there's some money that we got, I mean, we'll announce somewhere.
Yeah, great question. We talked about that on Wednesday, too. So, on the. Yeah, the second, for the expenditure page?
Yeah.
Bottom section is four hundred thousand. Oh, yeah.
Generally, I think you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And I'm sorry, you drink.
Yeah, bottom of the expenditure page. And just above the both, there's ten E four one and ten E four one, operating transfers, specialized operating transfer capital improvements. So that two million seventy five thousand is budgeted to go directly to Fund Forty Six.
Oh, okay.
So the revenue is also shown on the revenue side up above on the land sale plan. Near the bottom of that revenue page, two million seventy five thousand. So basically it's coming into Fund Ten. It's going right back out of Fund Ten.
Okay.
I'm hoping to put more than just that two million seventy five over to Fund Forty Six in the end here. That's what we're just budgeting at this point.
Do we know if there's spending there like this year?
I'm sorry.
I know, I, I'd like a one point six.
Twenty one, twenty two. Yeah. We talked special app, but we had to talk about what, what does that mean? That's why if we get it over forty six right now, it's not gonna hurt us spending two years on the line.
Oh, that's great.
You know, have a money share.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll just earmark that. That land money will seem separate. Good question. I glossed over that.
Well, no, I missed.
We talked for a while last Wednesday.
Get some toilet paper.
I said five minutes.
Okay, any other, any other questions or comments about the adjusted, the adjusted, adjusted budget?
Exciting. Nice job.
Yeah.
Yeah, how do you want that? Great. Prove for a, prove the total levy amount.
Full levy of. Sixteen, six seventy one.
A move. Sign it who the levy has stated in the discussion. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Both. Very. Any future agenda if anybody wants to talk about breakouts? All right, now we have a motion for a juror. Name and sector of the juror, all the favors say aye.